Call to order, the regular meeting of the Caravelle City Commission is Thursday, November the first, 2018, at 6:00 PM. We're at the Caravelle City Municipal Complex. I ask Commissioner Allen to please say the prayer, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance flag. Well, that was a nice prayer he said before.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we've come together tonight to discuss the things that this wonderful city has given us. We ask you to be with us in wisdom and understanding and patience, and that we might come up with the best solutions for those things that are before us. We ask you to bless our people as we continue to recover from the storm, and we're thankful for your guidance and protection for us, and we ask you to be with those that are blessed fortunate and have more damage, especially those that are grieving for loss. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, where my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We want to entertain the consent agenda first for the October 4th regular meeting minutes and the October 25th special meeting minutes, and we didn't get the attorney's invoices this time. Has the attorney submitted his invoices?
He did.
Oh, okay. So, do we want to, how do we want to manage that, since we, did anyone get to see the attorney's invoices?
I haven't, or at least haven't.
It's different every month. So, but we do need a motion to approve the two meeting minutes for the October 4th and the 25th.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. And we have second one, first. Okay, and, okay, so that's a motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Walven. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. And then we do have public comment this evening. If you would like to come up, sir, and introduce yourself, and tell us about your SBA presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioner. I am Tommy Joe Green from the U.S. Small Business Administration. I believe I have given my contact and flowers to almost everyone. If I missed anyone, I will hand it over to you after, if I see. Basically, just wanted to give you an overview of what we're doing here in your county. We have, as most of you probably know, we've set up a disaster recovery center at the Franklin County Public Library. SBA goes wherever FEMA goes. So, if you know anyone who's had homeowners and renters who've had damages, please ask them to register with FEMA first. If it's through FEMA, then they get referred to SBA. If your rent money interest money is not enough, that's where SBA comes in with low interest long-term loans. Homeowners may receive up to $200,000 with an interest rate as low as 2%. Homeowners and renters may receive up to $40,000 for personal property. By that, I mean vehicles, furniture, et cetera. Once again, interest rate 2%. If you know any businesses, any nonprofits, and by nonprofits, I'm also including churches that have damages, please pass on the message that they can come straight to SBA. They don't need SBA referral. Businesses may receive up to $2 million. It doesn't have to be that high, it could be even $5,000. There's no real minimum. Interest rate as low as 3.675%. Nonprofits, once again, $2 million with an interest rate as low as 2.5%. Okay? Say if you know a business that doesn't have any physical damage, but just has an economic injury, customers are not coming in because of Hurricane Michael, we have loans for that, economic injury loans. $2 million and 3.675% in that one. These loans, they don't have any application fees, so really, you don't have anything to lose to come in and justify for a lot. Homeowners, renters may take, say, a half an hour to an hour's time. Businesses, nonprofits may take, say, two, four hours. So, all you're really spending is that time, and we think it's totally worth it because you can always review the loan, take a lesser amount. But what we don't want to see happen is someone missing the deadline and then wondering if that would have made a hole again. Currently, the deadline stands at December 10th for all of your physical damages, and for economic injury loans, it stands July 11th. Our Disaster Recovery Center, that's open daily from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So, I would suggest that instead of going online, calling 1-800-659-2959, come straight to us. If you need any assistance, we'll help you out. The resources are right here for you. That's pretty much it for my overview for Small Business Administration. Be happy to answer any questions before they have.
Do we have questions? And does the public have questions?
Is that the location still with Caravelle Library?
Yes, sir.
Let's go ahead now to that. Just say thank you for your support here in our community. We appreciate that.
It's good to be here. It's good to be where you are. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, and how long will you be set up there at the Caravelle Library?
At this time, we don't have a deadline for that particular area, but it goes like this. Say we don't have as many visitors as we'd like to have, it's a numbers deal, then, because we don't want to waste extra time, then we just may shift operations to Appalachian Bowl. But currently, I haven't heard of anything. But if I do hear that, okay, we're prepared, I'll forward it to you.
Are you having a good response from the entire county at that location?
As far as, yes, it's been very good. As far as I know, this is the only one set up in this county, so definitely we have people from Appalachian Bowl and so forth coming right here.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad to know that.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I rent my building from the landlord who lives in Key West, and as far as I know, there's no damage to the building except a few shingles. I just sent him this information, and they can, if, have it inspected and checked and seen.
Them as in the building owner, sir, or?
Yeah, no, they're, the building owner is in Key West, or the building is here in town.
I would ask, since it's like that person's building, I would ask as best as that person contacts.
That's, that's what.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's the best.
That's what I thought.
That's what I thought.
So, there's no way I would need to get involved in it.
I wouldn't, yes, sir. I would just let the building owner know, and we just go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Mr. Holcomb, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, then, Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you. At close to 30 years in law enforcement, I know what it means for somebody to say thank you for doing their job. And I want to thank you all, including your staff, for everything you did leading up to the hurricane, during the hurricane, and afterwards, keeping us informed, and getting together all the little things you had to do. I'd like to propose that you issue some of our past resolutions, thanking Duke Energy and their partners, the different people from the different states that came in, FEMA and the SBA, the Red Cross, Franklin County Sheriff's Office, the Caravelle Police Department, for everything they did trying to keep us safe, distribution of food, so forth. Governor Scott and the National Guard, they did a tremendous job. A general one for people helping people. I saw a lot of cases where people would stop and help somebody else do something, clean up, or whatever, just stop. They'd stop in the middle of the road and move the trash out of the bucket. It was very tough. I had a comment from a member of FEMA when I went to thank them for coming here. He said that it was a pleasure to be here because the people of Caravelle were more polite than any place he'd ever been. Everywhere else they go, they get rude and they demand things, but the people of Caravelle were polite and nice to them, and he was thanking me. And I would like to see a commendation letter be placed in the personnel file of every employee of the city, if possible, because they all did the grunt work. And I wanted to mention too, you know, I mentioned we saw utility companies come in here from all over, a lot of different states, but we also saw the first responders, fire departments, ambulance, come in from all over Florida. And what really took my breath away was when I saw an ambulance from Georgetown, Illinois, and I talked to them, they had over 800 bikes just to be available. And we could send them a thank you. That would belong directly there. But otherwise, that's all I had to say, and again, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holcomb. We appreciate your comments. All right, is there any other comment, public comment? Okay, then, we'll move on to the commissioners' reports. Commissioner Allen?
Nothing really this time.
Okay, and Commissioner Mathis?
I have.
All right. Commissioner Walven?
I have nothing on that.
Okay. Commissioner Melander?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay.
This is from me as a commissioner, and I hope kind of stowed my thunder there, which is wonderful. Thank you for the accolades for what all you've solved and have posted there. My thoughts were, I want all of the city's employees to know how much I appreciate what they did during the storm. I watched them in the beginning, the onslaught, and throughout and afterwards. And the city employees of Caravelle performed extremely well. I'm very proud of them. I think they did a good job, and I think the, I can't speak for the commission, but I think they can, but for me as a commissioner, I really appreciate them and want to know how much they did. That's all I have.
Okay. That's very nice. Thank you, and I will say, I will use Commissioner Allen's word on that as ditto, and not to prolong and say that portion again, but of course, I have a report. And I will say that it's hard to know where to begin after all the events during the past month. Hurricane Michael, as we all know, formed rapidly and made its landfall immediately to the west of us, to our neighbors there, and caused extreme damage. And although our local area suffered damages with loss of homes along the coast of Caravelle Beach and Land Art, Gulf Terrace, St. James Bay, for the most part, homes and properties survived the impact, and there was thankfully no loss of life, and we're blessed and truly grateful, and everyone is grateful. With the assistance of Duke Energy and Franklin County Emergency Management, the National Guard, Red Cross, city staff, our numerous volunteers that included commissioners and their spouses, our community quickly came together to help family, friends, and neighbors pick up the pieces and begin to put their lives back together. As far as our businesses, the, our marinas suffered the great damages, followed behind the IGA, Dollar General, restaurants, and those that had refrigerated inventories and supplies that were for sale. The city is still assessing the damages caused by the storm to the piers and docks, airport hangars, and water and sewer facilities, and I'll ask Ms. Courtney to report a little bit more in detail on that. During her report, it sounds like that FEMA is going to help reimburse with some of those costs that are not insured. The Franklin County Tourist Development Council is studying the hurricane's impact on our major industry in Franklin County tourism, and the council has adjusted its advertising campaign. I think may, some of you may have seen the campaign, bruised but not broken, that's being advertised within a couple of hours' drive. We're trying to promote Day Trippers at this point. And the 2018-19 promotions budget has been adjusted accordingly. The Appalachian Regional Planning Council is working with Triumph and the U.S. Economic Development Administration to assist the entire Appalachian region that was affected, and they've been approved by the state for funding for disaster resilience coordinator, which is another staff member there for two years. At my request, Ms. Lisa Lance, who's the Franklin County Public Library Director, stepped up to the plate and agreed to place the SBA team in the Caravelle Library. It was the very first team placed there. I received a note, an email from someone upper level, looking for a place to put the SBA. I reached out to five, Ms. Lance stepped up, and the SBA went in there, followed by the FEMA representatives, and now it's the Franklin County Disaster Recovery Center. And I asked, Ms. Lance made, gave this report to the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners on Monday, and she tells all the statistics of the numbers of folks who've been in there. So, I asked Courtney to include this in your package. It's impressive. And through it all now, Caravelle and its citizens are well on their way to recovery and ready to assist those who've lost so much more. A great deal of credit, as Mr. Holcomb said, is due to our residents, help from the utility crews throughout the county, the Caravelle Police Department, and all the numerous law enforcement agencies that were here. I know you all saw Florida Highway Patrol, Forest Street, FWC, I mean, it was just any type of law enforcement you could think of. We're here, and policemen and sheriffs from everywhere. The Caravelle Water and Sewer Department, the city and county roads department, road crews, city staff, and our volunteers. And it's inspiring to see and be a part of our community coming together during such a heartbreaking crisis. And although the city fared well overall, we do have a couple of important issues regarding management of emergencies that will need to be reviewed and discussed. We'll discuss those briefly this evening. But back one year ago, in November, at the November meeting, on November 2017, at our meeting, I presented a written report after Hurricane Irma, and that we need, said that we needed to have workshops to address these issues and determine, without question, the assigned chain of command, and to determine layout plans that should not be changed unless the event of death or catastrophic loss. And I'm going to say that again a year later, that we do need to have some workshops and discuss emergency management here for the city of Caravelle. But now, I want to say, immediately after the storm, the chief took Courtney and myself out for a view of the river on the police department boat. I was able to take pictures. I noticed, of course, that the old time chrome-like ice houses in worse condition. I contacted the owner, Benay Bowes, pretty much immediately, and told him of the damages. Now, the building roof is completely collapsed, the docks are in much worse condition, the sunken vessels are pushed down into the water even more, the household garbage that was, there was a dump side inside, that was pushed up close to the street. I told him anything he could do to secure the project would be beneficial to the health and welfare of our community, and he wrote back saying that he still could not locate a contractor to do the job, and he requested information regarding the Small Business Administration for assistance, which I sent to him. Now, we all know that it goes without saying, employees incurred overtime as a result of the storm and aftermath, but most of these hours will be reimbursed by FEMA. This past week, the Water and Sewer Department had overtime because Justin was on vacation, so Charlie had to run the water system, and John had to run the wastewater system. The live station at the wastewater treatment plant is broken, it's out right now, and Randy comes in each night to pump it out. It's scheduled to be repaired on Tuesday. On October the 26th, Courtney and I had a second conference call with Tim Center, CEO of the Capital Area Community Action Agency, and his assistant, Ann Robinson, was here on site while we made that call to Mr. Center. Mr. Center of the Community Action Agency is taking over the ESF-15 duties, and part of those duties are to disperse and distribute his items at the Domination Center. He told us the exact plan again, as he told Courtney and I on the conference call on October the 4th, that his staff would assist if he's point fire victims with obtaining any donated household items they need to carry on. And he again said his goal is to have all the donated items warehoused at the Caravelle City Complex removed by Thanksgiving. And I gave Ms. Robinson a tour of all the donations, and she took numerous photos. Have we heard back from them, Ms. Courtney? And we strongly agree with what Ms. Tress Demmerin has suggested, that the victims be allowed to come over and get any items they need, and because it's mentioned that they work and they need to come after hours, we've offered them access to the building 24/7, to this portion of the building where their donations are. And he's aware that the building is going to be slated for decommission and demolition, and that power will be cut off eventually when it was relocated, and they could certainly have access during daytime hours when that happens. But Courtney will be the point of contact for them, and she'll provide a key whenever he asks for a key, and he knows that, he's fully aware, we're going to work with them anyway. So, speaking of Thanksgiving, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a thankful Thanksgiving. We have plenty to thank for, and thank you all. All right? So, we'll just move on to the city attorney's report.
All right, certainly, Bill. Any questions? I don't have anything specific. I know there would be some issues to discuss on the later agenda items, but one thing that was percolating, I talked to Mayor Lurie about, is we do have that litigation on hanging rent. A clerk's default has been entered in that case. It will be served on all parties, and just from a progress standpoint, you probably expect the defendant to try and set aside, which, given the hurricane and everything, there's probably, there may be basis to say so. That's where the case stands right now. So, there was no legal response filed with the court as required by law.
Have you, have you heard, now, we had a meeting with Little Custom Homes on the day of the county commission, I mean, the city commission meeting last month, October 4th, and you had heard back?
I heard from them just after the hurricane. I forwarded them actually a couple of year-up emails, they were excellent, they were asking about what conditions the light and everything else, and I haven't heard from them since a week and a half now.
And you did forward to them a few days after the fourth, the lease?
Yes, correct. After our meeting prior to the hurricane, we forwarded them the lease and the guarantee for the paperwork, because they had all the paperwork they promised.
All right. But Courtney has not yet received the information that she needs to do the credit background and tenant screening. Yes, she does, background. She hasn't received that yet, although they said that day they were going to provide it. And actually, Mr. Hartman and I thought they had provided that day, so, you know, we still have not received that, and I think that we need to hold off on attorney communications until we receive this information, so we can, we can have that.
But it sounds like they haven't responded on that, or the last response by us.
So, I just, I just think we need to maybe guide and correct the attorney not to, not to continue to pursue until they provide us with what we requested, so that we can do the screening check and the back to the credit check.
I kind of agree with that, but I don't see how our attorney should be responding to anything. We're waiting on them to respond to us.
Yeah, balls in your court, swear in your court. I'm not, I'm not a sitter.
Okay, all right. And if they do, you know, ask them to please provide the information that we requested.
Many times.
Okay. Okay, and someone, one of the commissioners asked what happened to all the items, I think it was Commissioner Melander earlier, what happened to all the items that were on our agenda? What, and it's the, it's the hurricane. It blew them away.
That's fine.
No, but they'll be back. Don't worry. I haven't had the chance. I was going to send Mr. Hartman all of my items on the cell tower lease request, I'll get that too, but we'll get back to mine here.
Sorry, just updating on that, I haven't, you know, people outside our area are still very hard at work all through the whole thing. I mean, it's just a little frustrating to deal with for everybody, I think, but cell tower folks, I did know from the, you know, our focus is not squarely there right now, but they have been, they've sent me some comments. What I would like to do is get everybody in, and I'll sort the layup whole rack of sort of, you know, the piece of, but they have been in touch, voting, voting, as I talked to on the phone, and we were exchanging over the last two weeks.
All right. See if we can get that back on the December agenda. And does anyone have questions, or Mr. Hartman? Okay, then we'll go, move on to the city administrators.
As the mayor stated, we did have some damage to our city property during the storm. Our handicap dock at the old Coast Guard Building is damaged. The building itself flooded, and it has quite a bit of damage there. The 12th Street Fishing Pier had trees down on it, and the dock's damage is pretty bad at the 12th Street Fishing Pier. Hangars at the airport have trees down. We had problems on our water and sewer system that we didn't see right off the bat, but we found some skin pumps that have went out. So, our insurance company has been here, they've done a full assessment of all of our properties, and they'll be giving us a report. And then what happens is, I met today with CDR Wire, which is our firm that will be doing, they're helping us submit our FEMA public assistance grants, and there'll be, anything that's not covered by the insurance should be eligible for FEMA. So, we'll be submitting those grants, which includes the overtime cost, equipment, any equipment that we use, they'll reimburse us for all of that. So, we're working on that. Last Friday, we did a walk-through inspection of the new city hall building. We had a pretty long list, and the inspection of it was minor. The two big things that we had was that our security company, Redwire, when they put in our security system on the windows, they drilled up through the double-pane windows and let the gas out, seven windows that need to be replaced. Not the entire windows, but the bottom portion of them. That was not a contract with our contractor, our building contractor, it was a contract with the city and with Sonatrol. So, we'll, we're going to have to pay for sperry to replace those windows, and then we'll have to go after Sonatrol or Redwire for reimbursement on that. The new sign's been ordered, just, he's behind the house of the storm, but he's, he's working on it. The guy is saying, I called them, and they're out of command, and they were without power for a while, so they're, they're working on that as well. Security cameras have been installed, new time clocks have been ordered. I also, on the parking, on the punch list, the parking lot, we have several issues with the parking lot. They, it's not draining the wrong way to the north, it's not draining to the inlet at the south of the parking lot. There's a couple of places that's holding water, so I know the contractors have been in contact with Jason Light Construction, and I don't know where they're at with that, but they're working on that. We got our survey back from our water and sewer property that we had to discuss with Mr. Sykes. He had come in wanting to purchase a piece of that property. I will advise again that the survey's complete, and he needs to prepare a proposal for the commission. I believe he said that he was going to get an appraisal, so he can go ahead and do that now. On October 25th, we hired a new water and sewer building. On October 25th, we hired a new water and sewer building clerk, it's Shelby Bailey, and she will start on May number 12. We're looking forward to having her. We advertised in the paper for some new members for our advisory boards. One was the airport advisory board and I think Tim will report on that and Quinn's report. And the other was for planning and zoning board. And I did have someone for planning and zoning board, Mr. Skip Frank submitted his interest, letter of interest. So if you guys, if y'all wanted to vote, can vote approval denied for planning and zoning.
What someone would do would be nominate him and then get second to vote on. If someone wants to nominate Skip Frank.
Well, I will say that we, we need another member, we need actually a couple more members. He's also a member of the Franklin County Planning and Zoning Board.
Yes, that's the point I was going to make, is I'm, I'm.
Wait, he's a member of it right now?
He is, and that's a concern right now, being a member of the Franklin County. I just, I just had to deal with this recently, it's a volunteer position so far.
They're on it, but volunteer, yes, correct.
Yeah. Let me, it's usually compensation to get you in trouble with dual office holding, but I have to go back to the books.
Okay, can we do this? Can we, if we want to, if we think we want to appoint him, can we entertain a nomination and a motion?
Yeah, maybe permission.
And contingent on whether or not he can have served both.
And I'll figure it out.
Okay, so because we, we're going to be having a meeting and we need to have as many as people as we can at our upcoming meeting.
I'll make a motion that we take him by permission.
Would you like to nominate Mr. Frank?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion nomination by Commissioner Allen.
Right.
Okay. And a second by Commissioner Madison, this replacement of Mr. Frank to the P and Z board is contingent on what Mr. Hartman finds out on the dual board voting. And is there any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries.
I'd like to make a comment about the E O C, since we're talking about volunteer and falling committees, that point's really, we need some attention.
You mean E D C?
E D C, yeah, E D C, I mean, we should do E D C. We're going to advertise positions, and I think I had mentioned that once before about advertising that a need for some of these boards, that we need to include that if we want to continue the function of that committee. Anyway, there's a lot to be discussed and talked about, but since we're doing that and advertising, we may want to proceed with that as well.
Did you have anything else, Ms. Courtney?
Our water and sewer department, John Keen will be retiring at first of the year, and so we're looking to open up in-house for the position for one week, and I would like to start that on Monday.
Okay.
Charlie would like to get somebody in there and get him trained before Mr. Keen leaves.
All right, so you're saying then you'll advertise in-house for one week for an open position at the water and sewer department?
Yes.
Is there any comments on that? And if that's my place, then we'll go to the local newspaper and advertise, is that correct? Okay. All right, do, do y'all have questions or anything for Ms. Courtney?
When you say John's leaving the first of the year, is the end, is it the end of December or is he leaving?
End of December.
Okay.
And you're actually, what we're replacing John, hopefully we have an employee.
Yeah.
If he passes his exam, he's going to move up to John's position, but we'll be replacing him a lower.
Right, right. But it sounds like he's wanting to overlap if possible.
If possible.
Yeah.
All right. I just wanted to mention too then about the building punch list, the walkthrough that we did on the 25th, and we can discuss a little bit more in depth with Mr. Larkin, who gives his report. But there were plenty of cosmetic, you know, items, paint needs to be fixed or sheet rock, there's plenty of that. And that's not the main issue. To me, the main issues were the windows and Courtney mentioned where the nitrogen gas had been let out at the bottom units. And then all of the windows, when you open them, the top part falls down and it can't, they can't be closed. It's very difficult. You have to hold the top up and hold the bottom down, and then somehow you've got to come up with an extra hand to lock it. And it's, all the windows right now are unlocked because they can't be shut. You know, they were all tested here in the walkthrough and they just, they couldn't be shut, so I don't know what's, how it's going to work out. The parking lot drainage, and then for me, the side installation was a very poor installation. You know, I brought it up there and showed them, they, you know, they raked it out in the front of the building, laid aside, it looks nice, but everywhere else to me appears that they did not rake out, they just, you know, threw the side down. But we'll take a look at it after some of these hard rains we had. I know we had the hard rains during Michael and it's still, I don't know how it will mow grass, but we best we can, can't get it repaired. And everyone's asking about when is the move-in date, but will we have it open now? So ribbon cutting, and it's hard to say right now until we get some feedback, is that correct? Unconscious, so. All right. Okay, Ms. Keisha, do you have a report for us?
I was going to announce that we have a regular CRA meeting November 20th at 1:30. We went to, we're late meetings, so it's easy to forget those. Also.
November 1st?
20th at 1:30. Sorry, number. Also, we had to cancel our October 18th meeting with a combined workshop for the commission and the P and Z for our comp plan updates. We was planning on November 13th at 2:30. I've checked with all the P and Z members and they're available at that time. So I was going to see if we could have that scheduled.
Is that all right with everyone, November 13th at 2:30? If it is, then can we have a motion for that, for a combined workshop? Okay, all right, so we have that motion for a combined workshop, November 13th at 2:30. Is there a second? And that motion's by Commissioner Walton.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so we have the second by Commissioner Madison, is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. Is there anything else?
None.
Okay, do you all have questions for the city clerk? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to.
Oh, and I just, we'll go ahead and have our P and Z meeting that day as well, right after that, so we'll just get it all done and laid out.
And we'll need to notify Mr. Fettch with that meeting as well.
Yeah, and Russell, I know you have an item, so if you can make that happen.
All right, then, and then your report now, so.
Thank you. Okay, to the, on our projects on Avenue B, construction is ongoing. Seems to be progressing quicker now that they're completing the underground work, so the above ground work is moving along at a quicker pace. The Kios Edition project, DOT had that on their schedule to review, and that's been delayed by the storm, but as soon as we receive their approval to authorize that project to move forward for letting. We did contact them last week and they indicated that it was on the list, but they were waiting. On the city hall, we do have the punch list and we'll ask the contractor for a date when they anticipate having that completed, we'll do a second walkthrough. I will make a comment on the parking, the grading for the parking is not for the plan. So we pointed that out to the contractor clearly in the plans, and we have specific spot elevations, and that's not how it was constructed, so they have, they need to correct But I'd also like to add to your list, I know only a left law, there was some wiring that wasn't exactly correct, that I thought was a non-cosmetic item that we want to make sure that gets repaired. It was affected by the lights, which is what we're working on.
And that conference room.
Right. And I think there were some other areas where that wasn't correct. But in summary, we'll ask for a date or a second walkthrough with the contractor, and we'll let them have that. Lighthouse Estates moved forward, we're designing the low pressures sewer system. And by the way, that will be sized to accommodate the future Phase Two project, because the Phase Two system runs through the Phase One process. Also, we do have progress on the raw water filter system and the brine disposal system. We'll be coordinating with Charlie to get his plans completed and implement a pilot study for the raw water system. That pilot study will run for 90 days and that's currently approved by D E P. On the brine disposal system, the testing is complete, we're waiting for the final report from the testing firm. When we receive that, we'll be ready to submit a permit application to D E P for that system. Okay, I think that's all, if you have any questions?
The brine disposal system, where's that going to be, Russell?
That'll be at the plant itself. So there's a, basically you'll take the brine solution, which is very, very soft.
Correct.
And that brine solution will be dumped into a sand filter, this open air, and also filtered through the sand, and there'll be a pump there that would inject it into the reuse water. So it'll be a mix of brine and the reuse water at a certain percentage, and that's what, that's what the final report were telling us. So we'll define that mixture ratio, and then that gets pumped into the spray. So the issue is, you know, the brine was corroding.
Corroding, I remember that. Right, so. I was asking, I didn't know what the plan was.
Right, so if you want me to go into the plan?
Okay, all righty. Carter, Carter, any other questions?
One other question about the, you had reported on the paper, there's some issues with muck out there.
Yes.
Kios.
Kios, right. Yeah, Kios, right. Yes, there is. Okay, any update on that? Yes, so the system we designed now, typically when you come up, the solution is to remove it, replace it with a select material. But in this case, we have existing homes that are allowing that roadway for access, so it's nearly impossible to overexcavate that muck material because you would hinder the access to the existing elements. So what we've come up with is a geotextile fiber that essentially lays on top of that material, tucked in on the sides, and it provides the tensile strength in multiple directions, so it prevents that pavement from moving like it would if the muck remained under it without it. So that's the solution, and that's what we've sent to DOT for their final review. It's on their approved product list, so it's something that the department uses.
Thank you.
Okay, just for your, what was, did they test the depth of that muck? Yes, we do, we do have, it varies, but you know, some of the, you know, we didn't, we didn't do 20 foot muck, we had, you know, six foot muck, so, and some of those, it was a full depth.
Okay, you all, what's our reminder, you're all going to remember on our previous parking lot there at Boat Rent there on Marine Street, that they did some testing and it was soft soil there as well, and they came back, we had to, with a change order, and you all may remember, they put a grid out, and then I think they put the, some plastic down, some kind of, something down first and then a grid on top of that, and then they put the concrete next to reinforce that ground, so.
Like that was on the sandy soil, on the muck soil.
So it would be something similar to that. So, Mr. Russell, you say that the parking lot of the new building, how is that going to be, and how would you suggest that be repaired?
Well, if it was regraded to the plan, that's the repair, and that's what we've directed contractors to do.
So you're basically saying build the whole parking lot?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I should clarify. You know, I haven't checked the spot elevations on the parking lot, I did go by there today since it was raining. I didn't notice bird baths, it's kind of what you look for in areas that don't rain. I didn't directly notice a bird bath. So there may not be any issues with the paving, but I'm going to look at it again.
Okay.
But now the gravel is not graded correct.
Yes, we understand that.
Yes, and so that can be regraded.
But we see and sent a video to you of the, of the border of all the pavement draining to the north, northwest.
Yes, and that would be okay as long as they grade gravel course correctly, because that way it'll bring it around to the inlet we're supposed to.
All right.
There are two, two bird baths areas, and asphalt. I live right there, and you give it an opportunity like the rain we received this afternoon, you give it an opportunity for the rain to cease, a little bit of drying to come, you'll see our two bird baths there in different areas from here to there.
Okay. I'll ask the contractor to provide us with spot elevations and get that corrected.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. The next up on our advisory board report is Waterfront Partnership. Mr. Allen, you'll have to get yours tomorrow.
I've sent my report in and basically it's, it's kind of a continuation of what we had last month. We've continued on the process of getting the building repairs at Old City Hall. Moving forward, we have finally gotten a draft contract and drawings and so forth from the architect, and we have sent them their, our feedback and worked with the contractor, and we're trying desperately to start next week. If we can get the architect to make some needed changes to the drawings, we hope to be able to start within a week. However, because of the storm, there's a lot of, lot of delays here. For example, the air conditioning company, which is the first company that we want to deal with, they're booked up and we've been, Mr., it's not Mr. Gunn, it's the, the gun, gun here, the man in charge, I can't place his name at the moment. Anyway, he's been moving down the calendar with us, but the storm kind of messed up his timing because he's very much, they're very much in demand right now for work. So hopefully we can move on with that as quickly as possible because we certainly want to get all of the things that we have in storage here for the museum out of the building in a timely manner, so we're still planning to do that. I was thrilled to be able to find a deed to the, to the Old Water Plant, so we were able to get that to Courtney today. Did you get that today? Well, you'll get it tomorrow then, but we found the deed, you don't have to go and get it again. You know, they laugh at me for keeping everything, but that's what I do, so I was able to find the deed, and actually goes back, the deed was in 1918 when that land was initially beaded over from the Cooney's family to some other parties who ultimately beaded it over to the, to the city. So ready for $100, the city got the land that the Old Water Plant was on, so just, I love all that stuff, but.
Now, they will be, you know, title search started and it's going to be around $250.
Well, I don't know what all, what all I have. I'm not really able, I don't know that much about the various documents, but it has the deed and then it has another piece that's got the meets and bounds and all the different things on it, and various names and stuff, but I don't know about that. But anyway, we found something, that's the good news. And everything else is just proceeding on as it was before the storm. And as you know, as you all know, a lot of what we've done this month has been work on storm-related activities. And I will say, it was very impressive to see all of you out there feeding people, helping out, doing 10, 12 hours a day sometimes as possible, and. out, doing ten, twelve hours a day sometimes as possible, and it was great. I just felt really good about our community, that the leadership was there, making a presence, and the volunteers in the community were so willing to help. And it was as we were expected, but you never know how things are gonna turn out. But it was just a very heartwarming thing, and I'm glad to have been a little part of that. I don't have any other particular announcements except to tell you that I handed out, you may remember, the T D C gave a special grant to the three museums in Carabelle to advertise, a new round of advertising because of the changes, the moving of the Kentwood Johnson, and also the changing of our hours to the thirty hours. So this new card covers the three museums, and just for what it's worth, the little picture on the front, the girl with her first buck is Cheryl Sanders, and that was, she was nine years old when she shot that buck. And we came by that picture, we were looking for, we were looking for a female figure to go on there, and so we put Cheryl on there for this time. So, I've got some more, I just grabbed, I haven't, didn't grab enough of this, I'm sorry about that. And then, we're in the process of doing, we've got the poster version of that, and we've got the handout version of that, but we also have a billboard the size of a piece of plywood, a small billboard, that's gonna hang on the fence across the street from the visitor's center, and it'll be on the other side of the driveway from where the World Sports Police Station is, that is a version of the three faces of the museums. And I think it's gonna turn out really nice, and from the things we've seen, and that will be a kind of precursor to what we hope, the bigger billboard would be like. But those are just an update of where we are with that, and we appreciate both the T D C and the local. It's very nice to have a business account that can produce billboards and posters and other things with the lost treasure sign and sign, and it's made things very convenient for getting stuff done and not having to take the money out of town. So we really like that part. Anybody have any questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
I'd have a comment. We were talking a while ago about the people who came to Carabelle and were so impressed with the National Guard, just really tickled to get through work here. They just always find a little place to work, because they had so many of them.
Yeah.
They were treated, you know, well, and everybody's friendly, and nobody cried, complained, just did their work.
In fact, the first crew, the sergeant asked me to contact his commanding officer, which I did, to ask if they stayed the extra night and not bring down the next crew they wanted, they wanted to stay, as long as they could in Carabelle.
They got fed better than anywhere else, did they, Sid? Thank you all.
Okay. And now I just want to ask, is this going to be this theme? Is that gonna be on the Sands Park billboard then? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's just, it's a continuation of that. On the one on the Sands, what we have is a face for each, we have three faces, three photographs of, one for each museum. And one of them's gonna be, the one for our, for my museum, Carabelle History Museum, is going to be a picture of Josephine Yance Pickett, where the Yance and the Picketts were two of our, one of your families. And she's got on this wonderful, like, eighteen eighties hat with feathers and all kinds of crazy stuff. And she's just a charming and interesting-looking woman. That's the image for our museum, and then each of the museums is submitted. One of them's a lighthouse keeper, and then there's an interesting, another interesting sculptor image that'll be as part of the one for Kentwood Johnson. But this was actually, we know this is gonna be changed shortly because we're all working our hours out and trying to figure out the new timing and see how it works. We just started like a week, this week is the first time we've all been open and working, and so it'll be a few weeks of a shakedown. And then we'll print some more of those, and at that time, we might change some of the pictures. We tried to get a mix of folks, but we thought the frogman was kind of unusual.
All right, well, we thank you very much, and we'll look forward to your report again next month.
Thank you.
And then Economic Development Council, of which there is no report, and they're kind of dormant this month, but I agree with Commissioner Melander, maybe the first of the year, we'll put an ad and see if we can get that thing rolling again, if needs be. Okay, then the next report up is the, Mr. Tim Sullivan of the Carabelle Aviation and Factory Board.
Good evening, everyone. We advertised for a new member for the advisory board, and we'd like to recommend Rick Meyer to fill that seat that we have open. We also advertised for two alternates, but due to the storm, we didn't get to respond to, we thought we would, so we'd like to postpone the, those two seats and ask that you appoint Rick Meyer as a regular member.
All right, if we can go ahead and do that now, and just interrupt your report and just take care of that now. I did work with Rick Meyer during the Public Safety Day event. He has a good understanding of airport operations. He's retired from Delta.
Delta Airlines, thirty years as a mechanic. He's young.
Right, he understood the need for safety procedures there in the ramp and regulations.
Yeah, he was very big help in both our.
So may we entertain a motion then to place Mr. Rick Meyer, who you may know him, who lives over on Twelfth Street there, right, right?
Right between two city halls.
Yeah, south of, on the same side as Spidey, south of Spidey. He's got a big dog, he lets out in the yard time to time.
I'd motion to reject Mr. Rick Meyer.
Okay, so we have that motion by Commissioner Mantis, but we have a second.
Second.
Okay, and second by Commissioner Melander. And is there any further discussion to appoint Mr. Rick Meyer as the new member on the Aviation Factory Board? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries.
The new hangar, I don't know if Dan, if anything's, things are delayed because of the hurricane, apart from contact and capic construction.
Yeah, capic construction was wiped out in the River Metto Beach, their office. They contacted Courtney, so we have now back one in contact with them. I was just talking to Bear earlier, is, and the board would decide this.
Is, I guess, at this point, we have a meeting prior to the hurricane regarding difficulties that we're having with the construction on the hangar, and we had asked Kathy Construction to make it right at their cost. They, this is before the hurricane, they refused to do so. There being some controversy, there's a lot of finger pointing. And the next step for the city would be to send them, if it's what we want to do, because we're kind of at odds here at deadlock, to send them a notice of default and right to cure, which gives them seven days to get back to us and tell us exactly what they're doing and progress to fixing the problem that they're not taking ownership of at this point, but obviously, the hope is they would at that point. And my understanding is, it's about an eight thousand dollar fix, but that's not certain, it's plus minus that, and, quote, that's the beginning step. And in order to do that, we have to tell them what is wrong. So from a technical perspective, again, ask them to cure something unless they tell them what the problem is and what we commission to cure. We have a meeting out there, I don't know if we talked about that before, but it means, so there's been talk of how to fix it and whatnot, but that was all just talk, not technical direction. And we do have, let me keep my name wrong, Jacob Jackson, engineering. That would be the person that we'd contact, I would think, to get direction on what we are telling, what we are notifying Kathy they are in default of, what they can do to fix it. So really, the commission head in that direction, we have to allocate some money, I would think, to have the engineer do that.
So then the way I'm understanding it, then, Mr. Sullivan, is that, and I would suggest this, to send the notice to Mr. Kathy, now that he has pulled himself out of the storm up there and contacted Courtney, of the notice to, that he's in default and that he has right to cure. But he's, to do that now, Mr. Hartman says that he's gonna have to have a technical description, and we know that the F D O T grant did not include the engineering fees, so we'll have to hire Mr. Jacob Jackson, who did the engineering and has been on site, to provide the technical description to be included in the notice of default. And so that's what we do, and that's, does that seem sufficient to you?
Yes, if you'd like me to contact Jacob Jackson, I can do that and tell him what we need.
Okay, so, but we would need, do we need a motion to move forward on that, Mr. Hartman?
Not necessarily. I mean, it can't hurt, but if it's not required, just want everybody to be aware of the situation and if they have questions.
Do you have a question?
To Tim, maybe, to the listener, to hire an engineer to write the text, protect the problem, whatever the issue is, is it gonna cost us more than an eight thousand dollar fix?
I would have to ask Jacob Jackson. I don't think so, because he is the one that wrote those plans, he's been here before to look there. He knows exactly what the problem is and what wasn't done according to his plans. And I think all he would really have to do is look at his plans, and he knows what hasn't been done according to his plans, just write it forth that way. So I would think it'd be minimal.
He did charge when he came down, I can't remember if it was three or four hundred when he came down to the site conference that we had. He's not, the city's had to pay for this fee at the time, including in the grant.
Well, that was my question, is, I kind of feel like that we would be a loophole if we were spending more money to get technical drawings, to file corrections, and we were gonna spend more money than what we're gonna spend to repair it.
And that would be my question too, is, is there reimbursement for that?
Let me know if there's more explanation, because we're at the beginning of that, we don't know yet, right? He may cure it, everything may proceed, but we are at that, we're taking the first step on that possible outcome. But the way this works under the contract, it's a little bit unique, but it's somewhat standard also, is there's this notice and default provision where we say, hey, we sent them a letter, he has seven days to tell us, hey, this is my action plan, and I'm moving forward with it. And then he has to make reasonable progress towards the fix, all right? So he doesn't have to fix it in seven days, he just has to tell us, hey, I'm gonna fix it, and this is basically what I'm gonna do. Then, if he fails to fix it within a reasonable period of time, we have two options. We can terminate the contract, basically, we end up paying for any work done, that's that, that's it, or he were terminated. Or we can correct the deficiencies and basically charge it, take it off of what we owe him, right? And like, finish the job, but, and the project, you know, moves forward. So that's, that's the possibility. Now, the contract also has a contractor's right to terminate, which, again, they haven't given us any, any talk of that, but he can provide us fourteen days' notice if, to terminate the contract, if work has been stopped for thirty days through any, basically, or any government authority or anything like that. Work hasn't stopped up there for a period of time, so. So we're in that, you know, I'm ready on with you, you're ready on with me, so.
It seems like, you know, there's a lot of money that should be reimbursed to the city for the plan, for the rent loss. He did not follow the plans. It is very obvious when you see the plans, he did not follow them. And so, is there a bonding agency that should be involved in this to, if he's in, I don't know what do you call it, a default of the contract, but he's not following the plans that were given to him?
I do not, I do not see the performance bond, there's the contract, but the contract specifically excludes consequential damages, so we are not, expressly in there is a requirement that we don't, we don't get lost, lost rent. In the meeting on site, again, I don't want to really hash out our, we've got this in other situations, or our case for them, but there is finger pointing going around, I mean, so, and I don't want to, I don't really want to go through that. We would expect it.
Well, I was trying not to ask any legal issues, I was looking at it from a financial perspective, and I think that was the way I explained that. And let's look at it closely before we spend money that we don't, that don't make those headway.
Yeah, and my recommendation, just handling and ton of litigation and everything, is, this step is a necessary first step, because he has the same concern that we would on the cost of litigation. But yeah, before we jump off the cliff, we want to know what kind of need for that.
And I did say that to Mr. Hartman, and after he explained, I said, well, we don't want to end up paying more attorney fees and engineering fees and what the repair is going to cost, but we do have to make the first attempt and notice Mr. Kathy at the front, and so that we can move forward. And we need a technical description of what should be repaired from a professional, so that if we have to hire someone else to do it, they've got that description. We just can't stand out there ourselves and say, we'll dig that up, we should just over here and fill that in, you know, so.
Okay, so basically, all Jacob Jackson needs to do is make a list of the things that have not, not done any points of the original plans.
And a description of what needs to be repaired, that bridge in the back.
And then there's a temporary light repair, I don't know if you have anything to do with that.
I have none. I've got my notes as far as the two potentially liable parties, and what I'll do is actually, I'll send you the email before I hit one of them up, want to make sure.
District three meeting, there's gonna be a meeting the end of October for the, a follow-up for the meeting that was here in Chipley. They lost their roof at the building, yes, so that's gonna be postponed to a later date, but it's basically on how to do the paperwork properly to receive the F D O T grants. I also went to the district meeting on October twenty fifth, and they were concerned about the fact that the airport was closed down two weeks after the hurricane, for two weeks after the hurricane. They, they made several comments about, you know, this being the only airport on the east side of the storm that was open at the time and then it closed. There was a lot of discussion about the usage of the property for staging, and the airport is very limited in space, it began to run into that massive thing for development. And the areas that were used were not built for the type of use they got, so we, there's a lot of standing water, we talked about the residential, there's a lot of standing water on the ramp that wasn't there before because of heavy equipment that was on it. It was rated poor by F D O T, they have different categories of, is considering the aging condition of the tarmac, and the ramp area was in poor condition, which means that for usage of a six thousand pound airplane, it had a short life expectancy than a tarmac that would be in a higher rating. And I want to say three to five years, but I'm not sure if that's true or not. So we noticed right away all the problems on that ramp and asked, can we want to come down and do a thorough examination of it? And they're working on, they're looking at, fortunately, it was just looked at not too many years ago, I think two or three years ago, they did a thorough exam on it, so they'll be able to compare then and now. There's a lot of stress cracks, a lot of indentations, and the concern is that if something's not done about it, we're gonna have potholes all over that ramp here in the next six months or a year or so. or a year or so. So I'm waiting to hear from them, they, they were here last Friday, said it would be seven to ten days, we should have a report from them soon. There was, there was other problems with the staging I put down there, just for future, for future reference. FDOT is also, in the discussion we had, looking at mapping out each airport and identifying each, each section of the airport to, for what can be used, for what area it can be used. There are airports like Perry, Marianna, Tallahassee, Atletico, that are old military bases that have that real heavy concrete, so they've got a huge amount of room. So it's ideal for, you know, that kind of heavy equipment staging. They've also got multiple runways, so they can shut down runways and still keep the airport open, where we don't, we just don't have the space for that. I tried to direct them to, in Erma, when Erma was here, I talked to the Duke Energy rep, and he had the recovery supervisor calling in, we, we went over the plans, there is a plan from Duke Energy for staging there at the airport. We, we looked at the plans, and then it was suggested to look at the industrial building over there, and he saw that and said, oh, forget the airport, that's where we're going. And that's where they began to stage. And I was trying to get this man here that was in charge at this time to do the same thing, but, you know, everything was happening a lot faster with the storm than normal, and it was just things that happened, snowballed so fast that, just for safety sake, Courtney and I discussed it, it's just best to shut the airport down, there's a lot of chaos about whether the airport was open, whether the runway was open and all. But again, FDOT is gonna get involved, and they're probably gonna do this to each airport in the state, identifying what spaces can be used for what, and what spaces would be restricted. So we'll have a better map of what can be used, and then we can get with the Duke Energy Emergency Management and let them have a copy of that, so we'll be better off in the There was a lot of people upset not being able to use the airport, and there was, there were several things, there was one operation airdrop called being, they wanted to fly some insulin, this is right at the beginning, right after the storm, but because of the chaos, they decided to find another route with it. There's a lot of things like that that the airport's vital for, and that was FDOT's concerns. One of the tenants out there, Davis Morgan, he's been out there probably as long as anybody, he wrote me a note, and he wanted me to read it, he was gonna be here tonight, but he couldn't get in due to weather, so he wanted me to read it out loud. "On the morning of October twelfth, I called for a flight briefing to find out if the Caravel Airport was closed around six AM. I was told there are no notice, notice airmen concerning the closure of the Caravel Airport. My wife and I proceeded to fly to Caravel with the purpose of staying and trying to help any way we could. We had loaded two generators in our airplane, as well as other supplies. My plan was to get my truck and tools out of the hangar and go help my neighbors do cleanup and other items. When we arrived at Caravel Airport, it was total chaos. I was able to land, but could not enter the tarmac area off the runway because it was closed. I had been asked about access to my hangar, and it was told that I could not gain access. Fortunately, we were able to borrow a truck and go and clean out refrigerators before we forced to leave. Unfortunately, we were unable to assist in any way during this terrible time, nor were we able to return to our property because the airport remained closed for two weeks. It seems that whoever made the decision to allow the airport to be used as staging area failed to remember that those of us who use the airport on a regular basis are also very willing to help and could have helped if we were allowed the opportunity. Furthermore, with all the vacant property in the area, it seems foolish to close a valuable asset when you could have staged equipment at another location and kept a valuable transportation hub open. If possible, I plan to attend the next city council meeting to express my opinion about making sure we don't make the same mistake next time. I would encourage all of you to attend this meeting, this, yeah, since Ali Davis Morgan." It was one of these things that can be a very good learning experience for all of us, and we'll have a, a plan with the existence of FDOT, and which we can then handle with the emergency management, Duke Energy, and go forward from there. Any questions?
Any questions? I, I've gotta go ahead and comment on this situation now. Certainly, we're, we're happy that Duke Energy came in and performed their duties, and I was back online in four days instead of four weeks. But I know, you know, they, they need to know what happened with recovery logistics team. I, I'm still, to this day, unclear how they gained access to the airport, I have no idea. And Mr. Justin was his first name, and that's all I knew for days. He called my cell phone, I don't know how he got my cell phone number, threatening me if the airport wasn't closed, that he was gonna pull out all of the Duke staging there, and that our community would be without power. And it was very threatening, and it was unprofessional. And he claimed to me on the phone to be involved with Homeland Security. And he, when I finally got over to meet up with him, he had no business cards, no last names were offered from him or Scott, that was his assistant, or I think it ended up, I found out that this Scott fellow was actually the head of the, he was the manager, Scott Crigg. They had no contact info, I asked them time and time again, who is your supervisor, they would not give me their name. They had security at the gate the first day or so, then after that, it was a free-for-all, everyone could come and go as they wished. He told me on a Wednesday, well, I, I made logs, I've got a log of everything, so he's telling me they're gonna do all of these things, and clean up all of the bad ruts that were left behind the hangar, in the, in the retention pond, out on the grassy area south of the runway, donuts that were cut next to the, to the runway, clean up the fuel station area, clean the terminal. I mean, they actually had their shower unit draining, and there was a septic tank with the, with the open up, the, you open up, the lid to the septic tank right there, they had this showers unit draining on the ground right next to the terminal, right where you walk up the steps to go into the terminal. So, and, and it was just total chaos. Now, it was unlike the experience that we had in Miss Courtney, all of us were notified last year whenever they came in to stage for our terminals, organized and professional. And this, you know, that they've, we're gonna have to repair the, the grass out there, the ruts. The city will have to pay for that, I guess, and then file for reimbursement to recover the logistics.
You know, there was a lot of proposals made about bringing the airport back to the condition it was when it came, but none of it, none of it has been done. And he was not, he said he wasn't leaving town until it was cleared, but he did nothing, and he's gone.
And then the terminals.
And, and, yeah, I just wanna say, you know, there's no reflection on Duke Energy, because I don't think Duke Energy's even aware of what went on. I talked to Duke Energy before the storm, and they told me that this man would be in contact with me soon, he didn't need contact with me, but all this could have been avoided. He had no map, he had no, no plans, Duke Energy does have some plans for Caravel Airport, he had nothing, he had no contact information, he had no plans, it was just not, not handled very well.
I mean, now, now, when he did call me the first time, the chief was there, and the chief got on the phone, so maybe, I, you know, I don't know, I don't know how, maybe he contacted the police department to get in, they can't get in when they whoop their sirens, so, you know, I just, I just don't know how that all came about. And then, when we tried to negotiate with him or offer a different way to set up, because now, these, these tenants were blocked on their property for two weeks, they may have needed their aircraft to get to work, or they may have needed to bring their aircraft in, I mean, they were blocked, they couldn't even get in the locked door. And I would be very upset if I was blocked, my driveway was blocked, and the door to my house was blocked, I would be very upset, I mean, it's almost like a, a military state. And the way, the way he talked to me on the phone was like he was commandeering the airport, and I, I didn't understand. And we had, we had the chief of police who manages emergencies in an emergency disaster style situation without having to come to city administrator. We have the water and sewer department superintendent who manages emergencies in disaster style, emergencies with water and sewer, without having to come to the city administrator. We have a volunteer fire department chief who does the same thing, manages emergencies, he doesn't have to come to the administrator and ask what to do, and then the administrator is, is, many times burdened, her answer is cumbersome, or comforted and comforted by the fact that she's gotta communicate with five or six people, the commissioners, each commissioner member, and the attorney. When you have an emergency, the emergency needs to be dealt with, and, and I point to ask for, to appoint Mr. Sullivan as an interim voice of authority for the Caravel Airport during times of emergencies and disasters, so that we don't have chaos out there, so that he can make a decision, if the decision goes south, it's, it's on him, but whatever decision was made, however this was happened, it went south anyway. And we need, you know, a first and a final voice of authority out there, he can certainly and will certainly report back to the city administrator and the commission when, when that, that is over with, when the event is over with, but we can't have an event and then spend two or three days trying to work it out. So I'm, I'm gonna ask for a motion for that now, just to have him as an interim appointment, until we can make some money out there and get ourselves a, a manager, a part-time manager of someone that's experienced that also.
I'll just type that motion.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we have a motion by Commissioner Mappus, and do we have a second?
I'll start.
Okay, so I have a dual second.
And that all, kinda what I'm gonna, the glory thing here is, what types of decisions?
Just for emergencies and disasters, on, for instance.
The thing is this, the thing is this, and I'm not, I, because I've always waited for this call, but it's always been handled, right? Is the charter. Charter has American state of emergency, you have, we have law enforcement, we've got, you know, a constitutional charter, legal, whatever. The only thing that would worry me is just as, as stable as you say, hey, if the buck stops with him, he makes a decision on something, and something bad happens, plane goes down, or something just bad happens, just what you were describing is, you had, say, chaos at the airport, but you authorize someone to fly, because they're bringing in insulin, and someone needs their diabetic, and that plane wrecks, I mean, or for our insurance company, because the plane wrecked is gonna say that we weren't maintaining the property, and you're saying maybe the buck stops with him, he, he authorizes a flyer, and then, but the insurance company looks at us and goes, what happened? How did he have that authority? I mean, he isn't law enforcement, he's not an elected officer, he's not an employee of the city, he's a guy with knowledge and experience and everything, and that may be enough, but I would say getting our end to check with the insurance company, someone else, I'm thinking insurance, I'm thinking, you gotta make the call in an emergency, and hindsight's always twenty-twenty, we're at it now, we're having a discussion of the problems that we had, but, yeah, Captain, we don't wanna make decisions today in a calm, that's actually wrong.
Well, you know, another way to do it is to have a really good emergency plan and stick to it. You know, that's, that was the problem here, is there was an emergency plan, Duke Energy, it just wasn't ever filed, wasn't even, wasn't even in any way.
And the contact numbers, who to contact? And then, when they contact, when the people coming here during an emergency, when they contact that contact number, that person needs to be able to give them answers.
And I read, I read the emails that, that it was, it was getting bounced around, I mean, Chief, Courtney, yourself, and Tim, so it's that ping pong ball shooting around any time, and it's like, we gotta make a decision now, we got a half hour, we have twenty minutes, we have an hour. And I agree that one person needs to make that decision, right or wrong, but we also, we got, that three of those people, you know, Chief's one of them, you're one of them, Courtney's the director, Tim could be one of them, but we've just gotta make sure he's got the, it isn't just us saying, hey, that's, just randomly appointing him.
But, and I'm not mad at all, I just don't, you know, what happened was, it was unprofessional the way the fellas came in here.
It was very much so, and it was, it was just, they were there before anybody knew it, they had no permission to go in there, but they were there.
And, and Mr. Sullivan, well, Miss Courtney is the airport manager, but she works a lot under the guidance of their expertise, these gentlemen. And if it's an emergency, she's gonna need somebody to advise her, and if she wasn't available, she was, she was already swamped, we were both swamped, everything.
And I understand that, I don't wanna relive, but I, I saw the emails, and I did talk to Courtney at that time, and she was getting advice from Tim, but she was also hearing from the chief, she was also hearing from other people, she made, she makes, she made the call on, for instance, the note, so.
And that's a figure that had to be done.
Someone has to do it, so someone has to make that call, again, like we're saying with, with Tim.
What do we have to do to get this man authority to just take over?
I would, my, my biggest concern would be insurance, because if the decisions were wrong, that's who are gonna be calling next, so to make sure the insurance company is cool, whatever.
And Mr. Brown wants to speak as well. Who has the knowledge of airport operations of all this ping pong you're talking about? That man right there has been in aviation, has run operations for the federal government, he knows the laws upside down, and you are saying that he would be liable for being a professional man, as opposed to someone that doesn't know all the rules and regulations? I mean, he's been there and done it, and I don't know where you're coming up with this here, insurance bet, but he would be covered with insurance if he's appointed by the city.
But what is his position? Meaning, if we appoint him to be airport manager, he's covered, I mean, just like we had a manager, a manager before, but we, we're, we're coming, we're basically creating a post out of kind of thin air, and we just need, we just need to make it form, I mean, I think that's.
Well, I don't know if he wants to be the airport manager.
Because that has been, I mean, honestly, with, with all the other things we've talked about, and we've talked about other things, is it is better to have, I mean, that has been a problem, right? Is, is having a single point of contact out there. Who makes the final decision on, on improvements out there, on, on all that? And, and Tim does have background on it, I mean, he still took the lead on getting airport board together, so.
Let me share my experience in, in emergency management for thirty years, and I think, I have to say, Dan's on target, and you use advisors, and let's just use the city administrator as a, not as an example, practical, because that's where we're sitting. And I agree that we need to make plans, and the plans need to be formulated and made way before the storm gets here, right? And those things need to be in place, and they need to be adhered to. But the city administrator is still the chief officer of the city, they still need to be the ultimate decision maker, but they need to be that ultimate decision maker with all the professionals' advice that they're getting from Tim, from the fire department, from the city police, from the mayor and others. But from my experience in emergency management, it falls into the incident command system, and that's the way it's usually, for liability purposes, most of the time. That's just my experience.
And, and I did mention earlier in my report that we need to review again the chain of command and the incident command system, and adhere to that in, in these emergencies. So, but, you know, I, I, I want to know, how does the, how does the volunteer fire department chief, how, how is he able to make decisions in emergencies and not?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get this dead wrong, but the, the fire department is, even as volunteer, it, it operates under a, I wanna say some sort of statutory scheme. I don't, I don't, I don't, I would have to get into it, but it is, and I certainly think, I mean, for instance, I know we had, you know, a fire truck got in car accidents, I think it's, it's covered by insurance, I mean, our officer, our, but we do that sort of thing.
And most of the things that we're, I think that we're talking about here, Tim, are basically things that we would want to coordinate with the county's emergency management group, because we're all, we're all in the county, we're all in this county together during a natural. a natural disaster. And we have a emergency management department within the county, not defending them, I'm just saying that's normally the way counties function.
Well, it is.
And, and, and that's the reason why I lean toward developing that plan and making sure that plan's in place and that's what's followed the air control system emergency.
And, and you know, good case of plan, this meeting, District 3 made with the Phoenix Springs, they're similar to air, the airport is similar to ours, where they don't have a lot of room, access room. And EOC wanted to come in there, or whatever organization wanted to come in there and stage. And the city, the airport manager, they have, they have a full-time manager, he called their emergency management and directed everybody towards them. And because they knew already they had a plan about the airport and what you could do and what it couldn't do. And it relieved the, the airport manager from having to deal with it, he could deal with his day-to-day business, and deflect that to them, and they were able to find other locations within the state.
Pre-plan and ready.
At, at yesterday's aviation meeting, I did suggest and invited, there will be a debriefing on it at the EOC, and I have invited Mr. Sullivan to attend that debriefing. And hopefully we can have some kind of a, a, a plan, a draft plan or something that we can present there at that time. So we have a, we have a motion and a second, so we're in discussion. We're gonna need to carry out this, this motion and second, and maybe we don't want to approve it at this point. Maybe, you know, I'm jumping the gun and trying to appoint a voice of authority, but, or we could approve a contingent on Mr. Hartman's research, that you tell us what the best to do. But I would say that we need to go ahead and, and start developing a plan and a contact list, and then go present to the FDOT and this.
You know, Courtney and I have worked together very well since we started, it's, it's, it's been excellent, you know. And maybe it's something her and I need to discuss, the, the parameters of, of when something has to be done, like this note or something like that, when, and as long as she says we get it, during, that's okay, you, you do that, but then the.
Well, I think ultimately we need to start looking for other sites to stage it and not use the airport.
Yes, definitely.
Or, or light staging, something where especially to take all that.
Did he say he had 300 trucks in there that he, he didn't expect to have, because when he started down here, it wasn't a category, it was category two and then. But in, in the future, we need to stage somewhere other than the airport.
Yeah, and he actually, it actually ended up being the kitchen side for not only the Carabelle Airport, but Hendrick Park and, and other little small satellite areas, they were putting out a lot of food over there.
We need to look at the properties that the city has and find other places. And that leaves the airport open and we don't have to use the airport at all, you know, other locations.
That's even more justification that the plans need to be put in place before the disaster ever occurs.
One thing aside from all this.
Can you get a copy of the Phoenix plan?
I will, I think I'm going to go visit him and find out, because yeah, it seemed like it worked very well for him. The other thing I want to bring up is, we have a couple of vendors that have done some work out there just recently, and they're being directed towards recovery.
I was gonna send them to, they need to, I had said they needed to build recovery and then get them to pay, but if they want it, the commission's all right with it, the city can pay them and build recovery.
Because it's minimal.
If we don't get reversed, we're out.
Yeah, it's a minimal amount of money, but these people are, you know, they need, it's small individual businesses really, and they need to compensate for working.
And I, I had already mentioned that to Dan, and that we're also going to need to repair the grounds out there, so I don't know, you know, about that. And then Duke, I mean, excuse me, Kimberly Horn was out there doing their assessment, and that's going to have to be paid, I'm sure, too.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll, our recovery logistics for that, too. So, but let's finish this, we had a motion and a second where I called for an interim appointment, voice of authority. I've, in, in discussion, we still are, and I would recommend that we all oppose that motion at this point until we get some further direction from the attorney.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right, withdrawing it. Were you withdrawing your second?
Yes.
Oh, no, it was, it was.
I'll say.
Okay, so I got Alan down this second.
That's fine.
Okay, so they're withdrawing then, okay?
This is obviously, we're moving on the fly here, but if you're getting on one of those things brewing up in the Gulf, any time, just talking to Courtney, I don't want to go around the spot, she'd certainly speak up. But it seems like, again, I'm, all I'm staring at is emails, but kind of the back and forth is, I do think, she ruined her, I would, I can look at this, but I think this is, would be the case, is that if we appoint an airport manager, and right now, that is Courtney's job, she's the director of the airport. We make Tim the director of the airport, well then he absolutely, he has a, I know the thing, given from what I'm hearing, he's like, Courtney's the one who issues the notes down, it's the director of the airport that does it. So, and Tim would have the authority, and that's a, that's an actual formal, you know.
Tim issues them too.
He does.
This is the only one I've ever issued. One of them, Tim issues.
Okay, so he's, but it'd be good to have instead of just one person, right? I mean, that's what we're shooting for, we're looking for someone who would be authority to make all calls and strikes at that airport instead of.
One by, you know. I could tell you from a really good job, I want to work for a little, that's where I'd be.
I, I think, I think there still needs to be that communication flow to the, to the head of the city.
I guess there would be, but obviously what I'm hearing, or what mine, maybe I'm wrong, but what I'm getting is that we got to be certification.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we need that, we need a head cook, and he can talk to the sous chef. Then Courtney be a sous chef, the chief would, the mayor would, but Tim would be.
That's what I was saying to Mr. Brown a few minutes ago, and what I was illustrating in my experience in emergency management, is you have all those people that work in those different functions, and they're the experts in those functions. But you still have one central communication that's covering the whole gang. And that's, that's the way every emergency management I've ever worked with.
Yes.
And you've got to have that line of communications, that the left hand don't know what the right hand's doing, that causes more of what Tim's describing, all this confusion and chaos. And plans are very important.
Well, I, I personally, I agree with the instant command system and the chain of command, but anyway, I don't think that we should appoint an airport director or manager at this point on the fly. I think we need to kind of think about it then and let Mr. Sullivan think about it, discuss it with his family, and, and, you know, we're, we're doing, Aviation Advisor Board just added another member, they're doing great.
Doing great.
Diligent, they're, they're concerned about the airport and its future, and they're working well with Ms. Courtney. We'll, we'll get a, a plan set up and, and think about it and.
There may be other alternatives, like there's, there's an internship from the Florida Airport Commission that might be able to get involved in funding a part-time or something. And then the management manager would become a manager.
The Phoenix plan will have a chain of command, if that's the plan, we don't get a plan, and whoever that person is, well, it's right now, it's Courtney, is, we decide who we want that to be, or you all decide that, and.
For emergencies, for emergencies.
And there was a plan, it just wasn't followed.
Yeah.
Yes, I was going to say, that, there's a key right there, if someone's not.
We need to give this man authority if it's not followed, to make the correction.
Well.
Good night.
Good night, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, all right, we appreciate it, thank you for attending, Mr. Brian.
Thank all of you.
Brian, and Bert, where do you too?
Brian, Brian.
Mr. Brian.
I'm sorry, by name.
All right, are you, are you all leaving now? Oh, no, no. Okay, it's time for the Carabelle HR Committee.
Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Magnin.
Yes, I do, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I did want to let you know that after every one of these meetings I've attended and did my report on the HR committee, the first thing Tim says to me when I go out the door was he took more than three minutes. I can never say that to me again.
Just took 30 minutes.
But obviously very important stuff. Well, the HR committee is, had their meetings postponed on October 10th and October 24th. And then because of that, we couldn't participate in the city commission's special meet on the 25th, because we didn't have any job descriptions in that final draft form. But we did meet on the 30th, which was just Tuesday. And we do have one job description ready to, to be submitted, a financial administrative assistant job. And we, we reviewed the, the city administrative job for the third time during the committee, and we still feel like there's some changes that, that need to be made, or at least we think we have a very good job description, but it probably needs to be gone over again just to consolidate some of the bullet points. And Tony and Courtney have, have agreed to go through that, and then it will be resubmitted to the committee at the next meeting, which will be November 14th. Now, of course, because of the storm, just like everything else, we got a little backed up on, on where we thought we'd be right now. But I, I was very happy that the committee did get together, and the people on the committee attended and thought it was important enough that we continued to work that we're doing. Originally, November 14th was supposed to be the, the last meeting of the year due to the move to City Hall and the holidays. And I think at our meeting on the 14th of November, maybe we can look at that and see if we can squeeze in another meeting, I don't know. Or maybe we just would have to, to go, you know, start with the, start again at the first of the year, on the first month of the year. We, as far as job descriptions, we have the city administrator and the city clerk left to, to complete, we haven't started on the city clerk job description yet. Of course, those are two very important job descriptions that we want to take our time with, make sure we get it right, and, and have a good product at the end of that, before we submit them to the, to the committee. So that's about where we're at right now, and I think after that meeting on the 14th, we'll have a better idea of where we are for the year. So that's about it, that's all.
We thank you, do you, do you all have questions for Mr. Magnin?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate your report. Please give our regards to Ms. Magnin.
Okay, thank you, I sure will.
So public hearing, there is none, and now we'll move on to new business, and we'll try to get through this as well, and then not have to take a recess. And this also has to do with the emergency, it's item one, discussion of possible action regarding designating a point of distribution location for public distribution of disaster and emergency supplies. Back in December, December 14th, 2014, we had a meeting here, and Courtney was part of it, and we went through a good bit of this book here, which explains about how to handle a point of distribution. And my husband was here, and Ms. Tamara was, was in the meeting, and Mr. Cowell, who's the commissioner, Allen, was in the meeting, you remember that? And, and we actually went outside and we designated a point of distribution and went outside and, and, and went over it, and made a, a little hand drawing, I actually had a, had a hand drawing, I've been in here somewhere. And that point of distribution should not be moved, it really should have stayed over here, it got moved through to Mini Cooks once again, and it got moved, and it, it worked out okay because it was a small disaster for us, but it's a, it's a level three pod supplies come. And there was quite a list of supplies that were slated for that distribution. And I'll tell you, it was numerous semi-trailers loaded with food, water and ice, one of those semi-trailers ended up in front of the library, two of them ended up at Chili's Hall, the fork with numerous generators, 18 in fact, I've turned those away with approval of the EOC, numerous light towers, mobile toilet unit that was turned away, mobile shower unit, oversized dumpster, I turned it away out here in front, it was delivered here to City Hall, all these things were delivered to City Hall here because that is the original address, and it never got, it was not changed, that was the scheduled address, Port Combe 101, Gray Avenue. And we had two large tents with floors come to City Hall, tables, chairs, vans, power cords, tards, traffic comes, those came to City Hall, and we came over here and got them moved over. National Guard, I don't know how they got to the fire department, but they did, and they had their three to four large vehicles, and the FEMA assistant team, Red Cross, Salvation Army. And actually, if it was a bad disaster like happened over to the west, we would actually get temporary housing. And during that meeting in, in 2015, we had designated the, the football field called temporary housing, like we saw in Katrina, and cooling units. And I was still receiving, and, and as I was a point of contact for the Carabelle Point of Distribution and the Chili's Hall point, and still received phone calls last week and actually had to come up and sign a, a manifest of a tractor trailer truck driver on last Sunday here at 101 Gray Avenue. The, you know, I just, I just want you to know that, that that happened, and, and it worked out well, because it was a small emergency. But the Mesa Pavilion sustained some minor damages because of heavy equipment, forklifts, scratches and such on the concrete and the asphalt. But had it been a bigger emergency, it would have been too small, and the congestion in this downtown, all the big trucks that were coming through, and, and, and you all worked it, you saw. And this is, I, I've set, I took a picture, that I took an aerial picture, I actually took that picture some years ago, and I just drew these drawings in here, and I want to give one to Ms. Tamara before she leaves. This was how it was decided the traffic flow would come in here, and as you can see, it attracted the flow to go back out to the, to the east, and we had signs up on Highway 98 at both places, and just suggestions of how the items would be placed around. Now, at this point in the wake of the hurricane, we have an EOC volunteer who is writing me notes and calling me and insisting that the new City Hall building and parking lot be the designated Carabelle Point of Distribution. And this volunteer is anxious, anxious to include that new City Hall location in the new addition of the Franklin County Emergency Plan, which this volunteer is writing. And I strongly suggest that we continue to keep our point of distribution at this location on the east side over here. It's got plenty enough room until the building is demoed or until something else happens. As long as we have access to this, I believe that we should go ahead and, and plan for this to be our point of distribution. It has a fenced-in area, and Ms. Pam says that it needs to have fenced-in area for security. We can get all of this, this needs to be moved, all of this stuff that's in here now needs to be moved out, I've talked to Courtney, that little fence can come out, we can have plenty of room, just as it was worked out and planned with the state EOC managers back in December of 2014. I think that our new City Hall building, it would, it would disrupt city operations and police operations because that parking lot is right there where the police access door is going to be in and out to the police department. It would definitely damage the asphalt, we, we saw very well how the front end supports went through the asphalt here, and it would damage the asphalt, forklifts would damage the asphalt, it would, you know, it, it just would not be good. We can have better law and order, which you have to have law and order once, once the National Guard came, we really got good law and order there and public safety. We were trained in that, that course that day, not to let the public out of their cars. And in a situation like this, you can't keep. And in a situation like this, you can't keep, you can maintain the public in, in the car. Ripped downtown, they were parking over here across the street at Gander's, the post office, walking up, and then, you know, it's hard to maintain their safety with vehicles moving and big equipment. You need to have room for all the equipment and supplies. And it's, it's just for a real big distribution point, there's just too much congestion at the Mesa Pavilion. It's, and the new building is really not big enough either. It would be damaged, too much disruption of the police department, city operations. It's too close to Highway 98. So I would ask you all what you think, and I'm, I'm being pushed so hard by this person that's rewriting the Franklin County Emergency Management, Emergency Plan to put the new building as the, as the point of distribution, and I'm gonna have to ask for a motion and direction from the city commission.
I'll make a motion to keep it without revision.
Oh, yes.
I'll say, no, I'm sorry.
All right, okay, all right. So it sounds like we have then a motion from Commissioner Matthews to keep it at 1,001 Gray Avenue. And the second came first from Commissioner Melander.
That's mine.
Okay, and then is there any further discussion? Okay.
I'm, I'm all with what y'all doing here, but we need to get this cleaned up.
Yes.
We don't know when the next emergency is coming.
I know, and I'm, I'm ready to get back on...
I think it's a great idea, but if the emergency was tomorrow, we'd have a mess out there.
Yeah.
So this is planning to get it cleaned up in the future.
I had talked to Charlie about it. He said, you know, I told him, buy one with a tractor with a run-in loader, it'd be cleaned up already. And I think maybe I'm gonna be able to get him to help us get that cleaned up over there. And even if this building is torn down in the future... Yes, we could, the asphalt's... Yeah, asphalt's, I hope, I hope, yeah, we could use a slab. Maybe we could put ourselves a little pole barn up. It could be used for farm share or something. You know, need to think out of the box here.
Okay, well, part of the plan is to go back to the field out there, not to labor this thing at this point, because this is not the venue for it. There's all kinds of possibilities right here to be utilized versus the airport and other...
But we, we have to remember, the field belongs to the school.
I do remember that, but we need to coordinate that.
And I want to say that...
With EOC.
Bud Strange was a great help during this emergency, and I do appreciate it. He knows, he knows how to drive a Ford. No doubt about that. Okay, so we have a, a motion by Commissioner Matthews, the second by Commissioner Melander. We are going to keep the distribution at 1,001 Gray Avenue. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, and that motion carries. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Melander, and the second by Commissioner Matthews. We adjourn, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, and then that motion carries, too. Good night, gentlemen.
Good night.